I think you so. I can introduce it, but you would probably need to get it started.
Okay.
Well, good morning. So just for some situational awareness, you'll notice there's some things different in the room. Look around.
Yes.
So we have two different TVs on each side. We will have a new screen over there. And eventually, the tables are going to look different. I can give you some more background on that. But as we start today, David is able to utilize more control remotely to help facilitate the parts of our meeting where we're able to engage with people using technology. So that's very welcomed. But thank you for everybody who was here. I think just for the sake of time, we want to make sure we get started. It is noted that Brooke is not here yet, but I'm going to ask Betty to start the work session so Brad and his team can start to share their information with you today.
We have a lot to cover, right?
We're going to try to cover a lot of ground.
Yeah. All right. Well, I call the meeting to order. And with that, do you want to introduce Brad? I think we all know him, but if you'd like to introduce.
Brad, for the record, if you would like to introduce yourself and anybody you have with you, and then you can go ahead.
More than hey, probably, yes. My name is Brad Niebling. I'm a bureau chief here at the Department of Education for learner strategies and supports. My colleague Barbara Olin, who's an administrative consultant for the Division of Learning and Results, is unable to be here today. She was going to be co-presenter with me. But like I said, she's not able to be here. So I'm going to do my best to represent the work that Barbara and I have been leading. More importantly, the work that a lot of our staff and a lot of Iowa educators have been a part of with Iowa E-Learning Central. I will go ahead and do a screen share here. My first time in the new setup here. I feel like sort of like a cat where you rearrange the furniture and it's all interesting again. Feel like that a little bit. So I do have some slides prepared here. And I'll proceed through content, but my hope is that this can be a conversation, put some information on the table. But please feel free to jump in at any time with questions or reflections. This time is your time. I'm here to provide you with some information for your time. And the focus of our conversation here is Iowa E-Learning Central. I believe we have until 9:25 on the agenda this morning, right? Okay, so I want to make sure that I pace myself appropriately and honor that time. So things that I thought might be good to go through today, to highlight as we try to do often, the alignment of this work of the department with your goals as a board and your priorities. Sure, a little bit of background information. Now, we've gone through Iowa E-Learning Central before. So I don't necessarily spend a lot of time on that, but can, if needed, give you a status update on the work since the last time we were here. And to finally put this work in context, what we've worked really hard to do at the department over the years and we continue to do is to make sure we don't have siloed initiatives and projects that this play part of a greater whole. Because our districts and our schools are whole things, and we try to help them not have isolated initiatives and projects. So we need to make sure that we're keeping ourselves coordinated as well. So can talk a little bit about that coordination here at the end if we've got time. So alignment with board priorities and goals. We feel that the work of Iowa E-Learning Central most closely aligns with your priority of eliminating achievements and opportunity gaps, particularly around those opportunity gaps. We'll get into that in a little bit. And the goal that this seems to best align with in our estimation is that all learners will have access to personalized student-centered learning opportunities that include differentiated interventions and learning opportunities. And one of the hallmarks of online learning is that individualization. It's another set of opportunities to broaden those tools that districts and schools have to provide that personalized student-centered learning. So we feel like this best aligns with that goal that you have as a board. So a little bit of background information, just to get it back in our mind. The department was awarded a grant, a $17.7 million competitive grant that was part of some of the initial relief dollars from, in this case, the US Department of Education, to support students through the pandemic and beyond. We were one of 11 states that was awarded money from a pot of money that was $180 million. So we felt really good that we were competitive and that we had the opportunity to be awarded the grant and to use this. So we've used that grant to establish Iowa E-Learning Central. And as I'll get into here, that's really about empowering students, teachers, and families in their educational experience by providing them high-quality tools, in this case, for online learning. We started off with subject areas, English, language arts, math, science, social studies, computer science, Spanish. We're broadening into business, financial literacy. So we're continuing to expand the content areas as we go here. But that's where we started right out of the gate. So why this? Why are we doing Iowa E-Learning Central of the host of things we could be doing? And we are doing other things, but why is this one of them? We know that even pre-pandemic, there were existing inequities and students' opportunity to learn what's in Iowa's academic standards. So you think about that priority area you have around closing opportunity gaps. We know there have been opportunity gaps that lead to achievement gaps. The purpose of E-Learning Central is to try to reduce some of those inequities by providing free for districts to use a set of resources and tools that help with implementation of Iowa's academic standards. And I'll talk a little bit about the different ways Iowa E-Learning Central can do that. It's also a great opportunity for us to work collaboratively as a system. And by that, I mean teachers, other educational leaders, families, communities. We're better together, and this is one way that we can work together. So we prioritize that. So then what is it, right? What is Iowa E-Learning Central? Some of that text is maybe too small to read up there, but I'm going to go through the highlights. And I think you'll have access to these slides, so. But really, Iowa E-Learning Central boils down to three things. One, resources and supports for educators and families to help them be effective participants in online learning. Two, high-quality course development in a repository, so online courses. And then three, a student course exchange. And I'm going to talk a little bit about what that means, too. So Iowa E-Learning Central's three things: resources, courses, and a course exchange. So I wanted to update you now a little bit on the progress we've been making in terms of getting this out into people's hands. So the resources and supports for educators, families, and students. As I noted, this is a set of resources that's going to grow. There's going to be a library of this in E-Learning Central over time that are really intended to help educators, students, and families be effective participants in the online learning experience. This is new for the 2122 school year. And I will note, the website is up, at least the initial parts. And I'll get into some of the other updates, too. And we're hopefully just a few weeks away from getting the password-protected parts there so people can start accessing more and more of that's in there. Right now, we've got a flat webpage that people can see. But these resources for educators, for students, and families. So you can see at the top there, the way this website is laid out is by sort of target area, right? Because different folks are going to have different things they're looking for and different roles in the process. So we've got sections in E-Learning Central for educators, students, and families. And there's a couple of examples here of the resources that are being loaded into the system now. And there will be others, but we've got an online success checklist for educators. So what are the big things that you need to be thinking about and doing as an educator around online learning? Because it's not one and the same with face-to-face learning. As everybody's learned, we want to help folks know quickly and easily what are things they can be doing. We've got some resources there to support success with social, emotional, behavioral health educators. So those are links to online modules that teachers can engage with so they can help students with their social, emotional, behavioral health needs in online learning environments. These two are examples of things that, when the pandemic hit, and you recall, the department sort of went into overdrive with creating resources and tools and trying to, and guidance. Things were coming out quickly and frequently for a while there. We were actually able to repurpose a lot of those things, repackage them so they weren't pandemic-specific, but rather focused on online learning and to use them for Iowa E-Learning Central. So it's an example of us connecting to work that's already been done. Instead of starting over again, we adjust and make them applicable for needs as they evolve over time. So we're able to load a lot of those things into Iowa E-Learning Central for educators to use to learn or to help them just navigate nuts and bolts. So those are supports and resources in Iowa E-Learning Central. Two is the course repository. And right now, we've got course descriptions for the first wave of courses that have been developed. We're done, with the exception of, I think, one course. We're getting the final review done on the front of development. But we've got the course descriptions in there, so educators can go in there and look now about what's coming. So the goal here, by second semester, is that they'll be able to start downloading those into their local learning management systems.
Yeah, John?
Who reviews the courses? Is that department?
Yeah, good question. So what we did was we developed quality criteria. What makes a good online course? And we drew from the researchers and the organizations to think about that, put it together. And what we do then is two things. We have our content experts on staff here who can use those criteria to look through courses. But we've also hired additional educators to apply those criteria and look at the courses. And then we also contract with Iowa State University and their Instructional Technology Center to provide ongoing training and coaching and feedback as teachers go in developing their courses. So by the time they are done, they've been through a quality review two or three times at least through the development process.
That's encouraging.
Yeah.
Does this junk in, junk out?
Absolutely. And you know, there's always a trade-off here, right? You can fast, cheap, and good, pick two. And we're trying not to go short-changed on the quality. We've got a healthy dose of funding to support this work. But the trade-off then is we need to take the time to do the quality review work. And so we're investing in that, so we've got quality tools in teachers' hands. So there's this online environment you can see, hopefully, that's going to be searchable multiple ways. They're going to have these nice tiles in there. They're surrounded by the orange lines there, those boxes that folks can click on. Those be a screen, they can click on them, and it'll take them to information about the course, and they'll be able to download those courses here soon. And what's known as a common cartridge is just a type of file that can be used in learning management systems. But there are different learning management systems out there, right? There isn't just one. So instead of saying everybody has to use one learning management system, because we really aren't in a position to do that. We're supporting local control and that choice. You can use different learning management systems, but then we need to provide the courses in a way that would work across multiple platforms. So they would be downloaded into the local systems and then used in their local systems. So those tiles will take people to those files where they can download them. But they can search by subject area, the type of course it is, grade levels, the license types, because we're using open educational resources and doing some original creation as well. So there are different permissions that come with those, right?
Do those include assessments as well, Brad?
There will be some formative assessment tools in there. One of the challenges that we've run into that we're trying to be mindful of is test security, basically, because these are open educational resources. So we need to make sure that we aren't putting proprietary information in there. And those things also have a way of, even if it's open and not proprietary, sometimes we want students, and you know, I'm sure Hannah can attest, right?
Yeah.
You know, we want you to know what's, learning is expected. At the same time, we don't necessarily want you to have the test before we're done learning, right? Because that's not an accurate reflection of what you've learned, right? And this is about what students have learned. So that's, and we've been testing just the searching capabilities in there, and they seem pretty robust. They seem, when you say, I want this, it doesn't pull up 10 other things that aren't really related. It seems to search pretty well. So we've actually got three phases of course development going on right now. Phase one, semester one, or round one, semester one, either way. We are in the review, revision, and compensation. And so like I said, we've got one more straggling course that we're getting buttoned up. But those are for secondary, so middle school through high school. We're getting those finished up, and we've paid all but the one teacher that we're still finishing up with. For this round one, or phase one, semester two, and the second phase of course development, we're in development now. So what I'm saying there is we've got one round pretty much done. The second thing that we're doing, we're right in the middle of developing those things right now. That third phase around, we're going, we're getting ready to stage the application to get going, because we're going to be developing units. We've been developing full courses so far. But we're going to develop units, which is just like a four-week chunk of learning that could be plugged into local things that are already developed, or they could take them as a package and use them. But we hope to offer more flexibility that way by having both full courses and the shorter units. And that's work that we'll be doing this summer.
So a school that, several schools have started their own online academies, I think. And that's where they could plug into this?
They could certainly use these courses. Online academies could certainly use these courses if they wanted to. But you wouldn't have to be an online academy to use these courses either. Good. All right. So this is just an example of what those tiles look like. You can see, just for quick search information so people can get their head wrapped on, what is this thing? And is it worth me digging into a little more to see if I'd want to use it? And it's cut off here, but we also make sure under Lead Developer, the educators that have developed the courses, that's where they get credit for developing those courses. The department owns the courses, because they're being created, federal grant, et cetera. But we're going to make sure that the educators who did the work get the credit for doing that as well.
So what's our obligation to the feds who gave us the money? What do they want to see from us?
Yep. So, yeah. So we, in our proposal that ultimately got us the grant, we talked about the courses and units, the grade levels, the content areas, the things we're going to develop, and the way we are going to get it out there. So we've got to demonstrate that we spent the money to develop those courses, and we hit our marks, that there's an online platform that can actually be used, and that these are actually free because they're developed with federal dollars. So those are the big expectations for us from the feds. I want to be mindful of time here, too.
So are these available to non-public schools as well?
Yep, absolutely. They will be available to non-public schools as well.
And then you said there were some password-protected areas at the website. How do you, who gets access to those areas? Like accessing the actual downloads for the course? Are only educators able to access those, or are students able to as well?
Right now, like to start, it's going to be educators. We're using the same, it's a single sign-on system that we use for other applications that we have. So like our MTSS data system and some of the data reporting things that districts need to do, we're using the same single sign-on system for that, which is designed right now for educators to use. But we've had a lot of conversations about how, what parts of this platform are most helpful to students. And we've had initial conversations with some students. But we also, twice a year, do what amounts to focus groups. As we do more, we put it in front of folks and see if this is where they're, if we're heading in the direction that we should be. But it'd be really helpful to get continued student voice in those focus groups.
Especially on the review process after the first semester this is implemented, what?
Yeah, good point. A good point.
So just for clarification, this would also be available to home schools?
Yeah.
And they would just create an account then, or?
The way that we've got that set up, and I'm going to ask Janelle to make sure, Janelle Brandhorst, Bureau Chief of School Improvements, heavily involved in this as well, to make sure I'm saying this right. They would have to work through their local school district to be able to do it, because those single sign-on accounts are for public and non-public schools. That's the way those, those are the permissions to that system. So did I say that right?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thanks.
What about families? You said there was a section here for families. So how would, like if I have a son who's in, you know, kindergarten, how would I access this as a parent, or?
Yeah, so this part of the system is not going to be password-protected.
Oh, okay.
Right? Yeah.
So I could just go onto the website and find the resources and stuff?
You can just check it out there. It's the courses themselves. And actually, the courses, the reason why those things need to be password-protected, again, Janelle's going to tell me if I'm misspeaking here. She's better at the online system stuff than I am. She deals with that a lot more. The reason, though, the courses are password-protected themselves is just we need a mechanism for the downloading to occur of those courses that we've got some quality control over. The real key for the single sign-on, the password-protected part, is actually the third part of Iowa E-Learning Central, the Student Course Exchange, where that gets to be even more critical. I might hop to that, and then we can circle back down to these parts and talk about them. Oops. But the Student Course Exchange, so the idea behind the Student Course Exchange is that if districts have got online courses that they're willing to offer up seats in for students anywhere in the state, they can post them to this exchange. And if there are districts that have students that are looking for something that they don't offer locally, they can go on to the exchange and look to see what's being offered by other districts around the state. And that's where, as I was saying, the single sign-on gets really important, is people need to have accounts, and you live in this district, and this district's offering these things, and we want to make sure. And they're going to have some tools in there to manage that process. And so we really need to make sure that with that single sign-on, all that information comes with them. So that's where that gets pretty important.
Interesting.
A follow-up on homeschooling.
Yes.
Tell me if I'm wrong in what I'm saying. But my understanding is there is a group of homeschoolers who don't have to basically report anything to the state.
Right.
So if a parent were in that category and they wanted to access this, does their accessing this make them follow any state requirements?
Yeah.
So Thomas, you have to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that there was actually a carve-out in legislation last year for complete, students who are homeschooled and don't have any kind of relationship with their school district, that they wouldn't participate in online learning, essentially. You'll be able to speak better than I can.
Correct. For students who are non-reporters, independent, private instruction, or folks who completely elect out, they cannot participate in this. They would have to opt in to some sort of public reporting in order to access these systems. That was a change made in the last legislative session.
Thank you.
So that Student Course Exchange is the most complex part in terms of build and supporting over time. So that one is a little bit further out in the future in terms of being available. But the first, the first one, we just want to stage the resources and the courses to more or less come out at the same time. And then that will add to them over time. And we are, we've got the courses packaged and bundled up. We're testing the single sign-on system and making sure that experience works smoothly with this system. So we're staged for those first two areas to be available and for districts to use here, hopefully for second semester. In the Student Course Exchange, we're just starting in on that build with the vendor. And so I don't have as firm of a timeline on that one. But we're optimistic, based on the work that we've done with the vendor so far, that that's going to be a successful process.
How does institutional credit work? If I want credit for this class in high school, or what, how does that work?
Sure. That's, really works the same as it would for any other courses that are offered locally. Those are, this is a re-
So I could be working offline or online for high school credit or diploma in the end, and I could be credited?
Yep. These courses are designed to be used locally to fulfill their requirements. Yep, absolutely. Yeah.
Is this program intended to reach a particular student population? Or is it just totally all students? And if it's all students, do you know in the development of these courses if there's any consideration taken into cultural differences that some of the students may have?
Right. So we do try to address cultural, any type of diversity that you, that we could identify and talk about in the course development. So just in terms of pure content, we are working to address that. I imagine that's something that, as we get more feedback on it, we'll continue to grow into that and make them better over time. In terms of being designed for a particular group of students, I would say not necessarily. But what we're trying to do is be as broad and inclusive and making sure that any type of stu-, any students could access the learning from it. So for example, our consultant who focuses on instructional technology, assistive technology, and accessible educational materials, which is just a way to say is how do we make this more accessible for students, any student? But for example, students with disabilities may be interacting with this differently than students without disabilities. So we've got our consultant who specializes in that, not only helping us with the criteria, designing the training, and the feedback process, but just to help us all learn more about that so we can build our own capacity to do that, too. And then we can support schools as they're trying to figure out how to make this accessible to as many students as possible. So we're trying to leverage the expertise we have on staff. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say here, and I start at the outset, Barbara Olin and I lead this work for the department. But we've got a fleet of staff that have put in, they've completely adjusted what they do day in and day out and are investing so much in this process. And Janelle hopped in midstream in the middle of a new role, for example, and is providing leadership, especially around the online, the platform part of all this. So this is really built by over 20 staff. Not to mention, we've had 30 or 40 educators who've been building courses, plus Iowa State. I mean, this is really an all-hands-on-deck effort. So I just want to make sure to honor and respect that, that this is a huge collaborative project and a lot of people are investing in. Yeah, John?
Picking back off what Mike had talked earlier about the kids earning credits for the department-developed courses. I'm assuming that there has to be some teacher in the local district to supervise, to monitor, evaluate, and to assign a letter grade to all of this?
Absolutely. So the way this works is we could, one way to develop online courses is it's a completely independent experience where students are literally just engaging with the content. It moves them through the content. There's no, like, no even discussion boards or teacher feedback. It's just sort of automated. We're not doing that at all. So these courses can be both synchronous or live or asynchronous, where there's parts where students are doing on their own. But there has to be a teacher of record. This has to plug back into everything else that a district would be expected to do. So these are teacher-led and facilitated courses.
Is this K-12?
Yeah, K-12. It is K-12. The overall vision of the, and that's the grant itself. The overall vision of the work and the project is that it also can be available for preschool. Now, we're mindful that whatever we do around online learning needs to be value-added for the group of students that we're working with, right? And with the pandemic, it really shined a light on, is online learning appropriate for preschool? Amongst other things that shined a light on. So whatever we do for preschool is going to be value-added, but we have to be mindful of the developmental appropriateness of online learning, screen time, ability to be independent or not. online learning, screen time, ability to be independent or not in doing this. So we're not leading out with preschool, but we're attending to it to figure out what's going to be value-added for districts and schools. Other questions do folks have about Iowa Learning Central? Or reflections?
Assuming you'll give us an update?
Absolutely. Whenever you all want it on your agenda.
And we're good to go when, again?
We are hopefully weeks here from getting the single sign-on integrated with the site, tested, so we know that it's going to work. I think a realistic vision for districts is we have it available so they can make decisions about what they would use or not use for second semester. And I would anticipate that there'll be early adopters that really dive in and start using some of these things, but they'll be, most districts are going to step, they're going to take a wait-and-see to see how things are working and what type of experience the early adopters have. So I would anticipate more of an uptick for the 22, 23 school year.
How do we disseminate this? I mean, is there, who, who are the contact people? Who is it that, that we really get using this facility or this?
Sure. So we leverage our, our communication channels, our, our listservs and, and webinars, things of that sort, to get the word out. We also, the AEAs have a curriculum network that they host, where curriculum leaders from across the state, usually on Zoom, but get together. And so that's a prime audience for this, because those are usually the decision-makers in districts around that. So we've got that. The other piece that we're talking about here is just, what's the ongoing, one's like get it out there, but what's the ongoing supports, training and support structure going to look like? So we're talking through that, because that's going to be needed, so.
Is it the convention this week, or any presentation on this, for the local school board?
We will have a booth at the conference, the ISB conference. Yep. So we'll have a booth there, and it'll be staffed. So I definitely encourage you to, to stop by there and talk to our staff there, been providing a lot of the, the nuts and bolts work on this.
Will these courses be available for students to take, like in the summertime if they want to? Or is it something that they would have to go through their school, like if they want credit for, or, I mean, just, you know, keep on talking about learning loss and things like that. So if a student was kind of like, I want to work on these skills this summer, would they have to work with their school district, or they just could take them for non-credit, or how would that work, I guess?
Gotcha, yeah. So they would need to work within their district to do it, because the delivery mechanism is local. One of the differences between this and other models is we aren't providing teachers. And they aren't, teachers can't, students can't interact with it independently, but because it's teacher-directed, so they would have to work in their local districts to, the districts they attend, or the Course Exchange, depending on if schools are offering things in the summer, and there's a student on one side of the state who needs something that's being taught on the other side, the Course Exchange could be used for that, but that'll be locally determined.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Thank you so much for your time on your agenda and the questions. I appreciate it.
Brad, thanks for your communication too. You did such a great job. Thank you for the things that you said. Appreciate that.
Yep, I appreciate that. It's Mike.
I'll stop screen sharing here.
All right, turn your schools. Get myself set up here. Joining Zoom. Okay. My name is Janelle Brandhorst. I'm the Bureau Chief of School Improvement. I don't know that I have been in the hot seat yet since I've been Bureau Chief for School Improvement, so it's nice to meet all of you. I've been coming to the board meetings for a little bit now. I'm about a year into this position, but I've worked at the department in school improvement for many years, so it's nice to meet all of you. I have Janet Boyd with me. She's a school improvement consultant in the bureau, and she's also our resident charter school expert. See that my, yeah, let me, my screen is not being shared, so I think that I missed clicking the button. Do that.
You didn't miss it. I'm trying to promote you to panelist, and it's not cooperating.
Mentioned the lizard.
Voice from behind the screen.
All right. I think I'm going to get there now. All right. There we go. So Janet and I are here right now during the work session to talk with you about the new charter school application. You'll, you know, you've seen on your agenda that we have quite a few items related to charter schools today, so this will be the first one, and as part of the work session, is to really dig into the application that we'll be releasing as soon as possible. We wanted to wait for this board meeting to share with you, and then to also have the rules adopted before we had the application available to people. So as soon as possible after today, this will be available based on the feedback that we get for today. So just as a reminder, there was a new charter school law. It was House File 813. That was passed last legislative session. And it is codified into 256E. So our previous charter school chapter was 256F, so this is 256E. And it states that charter schools, just to keep in mind, are part of the state's public education system or program, so they're considered public schools. A new, a big new part of this law is that charter schools can be established two ways. So one way is the school board, state board model, where a local school board would be applying as a founding group of a charter school to all of you. The other model is a founding group state board model. So that would be an independent founding group, not, not attached to a local school district. That would be applying to open a charter school in the state. Applications for both of those methods are made to you, and you are the approvers of charter schools in the state. You're also the signers of the contract between the charter school and the state, so you have a lot of responsibility with charter schools, the state board does. We're going to go through the written application today, but definitely want to let you know that the application process includes that written application. It includes an in-person interview with the applicant, so that, that is part of what we will do as you're looking at applications and considering approval. It also includes an opportunity for a public forum for local residents to learn and provide input on each application. So this will be a pretty extensive, the application process will be an extensive process. And I'm going to turn it over to Janet now. We're going to, we're going to go through some of the timelines and some of the criteria that we're proposing to review the applications. We know that people are really interested in that. The actual components of the applications are laid out pretty specifically in the law. So there, there wasn't a lot of kind of, we, we needed to follow what was in the law, so you've probably seen that as, as you've been reading the, the law and the rule. So I'll let you go ahead, Janet.
Okay. Well, the application does start with a introduction. So it kind of talks a little bit about the background, which we've talked about. And one thing I would say about this application that we're looking at today is that this is, this one was developed for the school board, state board model. And what will, you know, if we iron out kind of the kinks in this one, then we'll be able just to kind of transfer that to the other application, because the founding group state board model has a few different things in the items that are required. Just a couple of them are maybe significantly different. So it'll be able to be, you know, kind of ported over there and used. So once we get it, get it cleaned up. The timelines, this slide talks about the timelines, and the first timeline that's important for this coming year is this February 1st, 2022 timeline to open in 20, the fall of 2022. So for the first go-round, they'll, they'll have a deadline of February 1, 2022, to open in the fall of 2022. And then after that, the deadline will be November 1st, to, to get it to, to us, to review. The state board will then have 75 days after the application's received to either approve or deny. And if the application is denied, the state board must provide a notice of denial, and then there's, you also need to kind of give reasons why. That's in, in the law. And then there, there is no appeal process. So that's an important component. They can reapply, though, so.
But they have to wait a certain period of time to reapply?
That's not, not in code.
No.
Yeah. No, there was nothing in code. An applicant is approved, once you're, once they're approved, then you've got to get that contract in place. This is a little different from the old law in that the application was the contract, but in this law, that's not the case. You have to have a contract in place.
Go ahead.
So what you're presenting on this slide is what's in code. Correct? So, does that seem reasonable that if you, and maybe we can't deal with that, but if, if your application has to be in by November 1st, and then the state board has 75 days to decide to approve or deny, so that's over two months. So now we're into, let's say, January, February, or March. Does that realistically give these applicants enough time to be ready to go on?
I should, I should clarify, November 1, that date is in, that's in rule. That, that one's in Chapter 19 rule, but it is in rule. And so I, I guess 75 days, and you.
It'll be, it'll be a very tight timeline this year with the February 1 date, but we didn't want to wait another school year to make, make the opportunity available. So it will be, it will be a tight timeline this year.
Okay, but I'm just thinking, it's November 1.
Yeah.
Really, I mean, everything really has to be ready to go when they apply, it seems to me, for it to be realistic.
And, and, and I think some specifics on that will be later in the conversation, because if you noted in the board agenda, the comments that came back on the rule suggested that date originally was August. So I think that will be better answered later today at the agenda, but as a noted point, that was part of the conversation, yes. That is a change.
Thanks.
And 75 days too, it's like, that, that's the max. So I'm assuming it could, you know, the board could, should have a shorter period of time, so.
And I have one other question. When you're talking about the application process, it requires a, a public forum. But would it be correct to say that the public forum makes no decision?
Correct.
So it's, it's just discussion?
Yep.
Not yes or no? Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
There we go. Sorry.
Yeah, we did the timeline. Okay. This is the criteria for the application. And what we've, what we've, what we're proposing on this application is that we have a minimum of three department staff review the application. So we're looking at three staff, and then we have, you know, a point system here, in that zero points, they do not demonstrate that they met that criteria. And I should say, there's 28 criteria in, in the new code, so. So the zero would be that they're, they're not demonstrating competency. One point would be their minimal or moderate competency, and then two points would be that they're exemplary. Another thing to note on this slide that I would say is, you know, we're looking at the, you know, if they, if they have a one, they could, you know, they could be recommended for approval, but any, at any point of, of these three, the minimum three, if all three agree at a zero, then they've not met one of the 28 criteria, thus they've not met what the code has laid out.
So a zero on any criteria would?
A zero across all reviewers on any criteria. We would not, we would not recommend to the state board that you approve the application. Any ones or any twos, we would recommend that you, that you approve the application, but we wanted to distinguish, we, we wanted to distinguish what our technical assistance might need to be for charter schools based on where their strengths, and maybe where some of their kind of opportunities for growth might be. So that's why we distinguished between one and two. It will help us with technical assistance and with monitoring the charter schools, assuming that they're approved by you.
Is there an appeal process?
There's no appeal process, but they can reapply as many times as they want. And if they're denied, we must give them the reason why they're denied, so that can help them in reapplication.
30 days to respond to a denial.
Why do you use the word minimal? Is there a maximum?
Or?
Staff?
We don't have a maximum noted. The, it, there are several goals that charter schools might be choosing to address. And so if it's a charter school for high schools, we might want to bring in some of our career and technical education staff. If they have some, we might, we might want to bring in staff from our finance team. If they're really focusing on early education and literacy, we might want to bring in some of our literacy consultants. So we didn't have a, a maximum number of people, but there's also not a maximum number of points you, that they need to have. They just need to not have zeros on any of the criteria.
So if there isn't agreement with the evaluators, what if two evaluators say zero and one says one?
Then the score would be one. We have an application with a sum score of one or higher on each question would be recommended for approval. Yeah.
The next section of the application is the performance framework, and this would be, you know, would help with accountability. This is what we're looking at for accountability. And it's outlined in, in Chapter 19. It's 19.10.1. And it will help with reporting requirements too. So I won't bore you guys with reading all this, but, you know, it's important you know, for any school to have accountability, of course, and particularly, it's been my experience working with charters and going to some of the charter conferences, that this is an important component to charter schools, is that there's.
So is this year-to-year? We have to show that we've done these things? I mean, obviously with charter schools now, we, they have to prove, show to us at least, that they've done what they say they were going to do. Fair enough?
Yes.
So is that a year-to-year then, each year? You will evaluate what you see has been accomplished.
The same reporting requirements that we've been doing, you know, how I come, and I'm coming today later with the report. Though there are reports there.
Okay.
There's also quite, you know, there's, there's persons of the new code that, there's actually another report too. So, so there's.
So you could lose your charter in a year?
You could, yes, you could.
Yeah, we got the charter at the end of that, if the evaluation is not up to speed.
There is, there is, the code speaks to provoking.
Okay.
And that could be yearly, right?
Yep. Yeah. And we really tried to align the performance. Most of the things in the performance framework here are things that were in the law. The law did give us the opportunity to add a couple of things, and we did add a few things. And our goal there was to match the performance framework here with what we have with the Iowa School of Performance profiles, and those profiles that we do for public districts and public schools. So we added an example of something that we added, and we got public comment on was the conditions for learning data, so that kind of climate in the school data that's required by Every Student Succeeds Act for public schools. And so we did add some things so that we could align the performance framework with our Iowa School of Performance profiles.
When the recommendation comes before the state board, what you were asking about earlier was like, if two people give them zeros and then one person gives a one, it's a some sort of one. But we see the breakdowns in each different criteria, or will it just be like, this is recommended for approval? And so how, how is the recommendation given to the state board?
I would like to give you the criteria or the scoring for each question, just going back to, you know, the technical assistance we might need to provide, or the monitoring that we might need to do in certain areas. So I'd like to make that available.
What I would point out on this performance framework, K there on the governing board, there's a- there's a, a big difference between those two different laws. The other law had, you know, just wasn't as well-defined as it is in this law. So the governing board does, plays a big role in this new law.
Yeah. Okay. I have copies of the draft application that I think I will, we can hand around it so you have it.
Yes. And the next part, the next part of the application is the actual 28, the 28 criteria items that they have to have in their application.
Be serious about this.
Thank you.
And I'd point out on the, on those 28 items, we've got it, we've got it in three columns. You have the code requirement, you have the application question, what we're looking for them to answer, provide for us. And then you have additional instructions to help them with. The, the law is very well-defined, you know, what, what they expect out in an application. So it made it easy.
So the first page, first two pages are essentially the information that we just went through with you in the slides. We just really wanted to point out the review criteria and the instructions because we know that that was an important, important piece for people to understand. So then if you go to the third page, that's where you'll get into the actual code requirements, the questions and the additional instructions. And you can see that every, every question that we have, question is the middle column, is how we will ask to meet the code requirement that is in the left-hand column. So all of these are linked to a requirement in the code for the specific application. So we, you know, I think, take some time, maybe we'll take a minute or two here for you to look through these. And then Janet, I think that there are maybe some of the, some questions that we want to point out to them as, as ones that we think are, are particular.
So whichever way you go, these are public institutions.
They are.
Could a religious group apply for a charter school?
Non-secretary. That's in the, actually the last page of the, of the assurances, the, you know, the exceptions that you can't.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's exception B. Say something.
Are you biting your tongue, Tom?
The instruction needs to be secular, neutral, non-ideological for the governing body. So if you have a faith-based institution wants to open a charter, whatever it opens has to be set. The instruction it provides and the students it admits must be free from secular bias or secular, or free from religious bias or basis.
So they can't say we're creating a charter school for X people who belong to this church?
Correct.
Okay.
Interesting.
Selection of governing board members, how does that work?
It goes over. It, it gives you parameters for that, like you, they have to, gosh, I'm not going to probably be able to pull it up real quick, but you, they have to be, if it's a, in a school, if the school district model, it has to be within, they have to reside within that school district, am I correct there?
Yeah.
Third page.
And then if they're a, if they're a founding group, state board model, they have to, they have, I believe it's half of them have to be within the parameters of that school and the other half have to be Iowa residents.
And when we look at the rule a little bit later today with Thomas, we can expand on that. Give us a minute to find it in the rule and.
There's similar time requirements or in, in instructional time that we require as a state. I mean, does charter schools have to show that as well?
They have to.
Are they obligated to the same?
They would have to, that is one, the last page in those assurances, that's one of the things that they could waive. It's, it's in the, kind of the, the assurances that you'll do that, but they can ask for a waiver.
On that part?
On that 1080.
Yeah.
I don't know the exact code numbers off the top of my head.
And that's one of the really important questions. It's, it's towards the end of the questions, but there's a question that asks the charter school, which laws might they want to waive? And they can list if there are a lot, if there are things that they're requesting as part of their application that they'd like. There are a couple of things that they can't waive and that's listed. But they can request to waive pretty large chunks of law as part of their application to you.
One thing that's, oh, go ahead.
Number 18, as far as the governing bylaws, is this the equivalent of board policy for
And yes, I think it is. It's kind of the equivalent of board policies. Yep. Yep.
Instructors within this charter school, do they have to be like certified licensed teachers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And, and one other thing, what I was going to mention is that, you know, I know there's been interest in seeing the application, but the application is so bound by the statute and the rules. We're having a final discussion later today on the rules, like some of your comments and questions are really tied to that conversation. So depending what happens today, this could be adjusted. So we wanted, people wanted to see it. We wanted to show it to you and have a chance for conversation. But that later conversation is a lot of these details that are really going to get vetted on the final version of the feedback in terms of what the rules will be that support the statute. But as you've noted, it is substantial and just very tightly mirrors what code and rule requires us to implement.
I'd be interested too in the, in the inquiries that you have had and have they been, I think I asked this question last time we met about have, have you had phone calls, have people called? Is this something that you're, you're dealing with right now?
Yes.
And you would say quite a, quite a few.
I don't know quite a few, but.
Some, yes. And, and from public school districts and from independent founding groups.
If we evaluate these charter schools on a year-to-year basis, we have brought Stormlake in, have we done that every year with Stormlake? Do we bring them in?
No, they come every four years.
Every four?
They, they renew, they renew every four years.
Every four years.
They come to you every, every four years.
But according to this law, it's year-to-year?
You know, they won't come, they won't come for renewal.
Every five years for renewal?
Every five years for renewal.
The charter itself.
Yes. And the way I, and I, I'm not going to try to interpret the, because I'm not a lawyer, but I, the way, they're going to, they're going to report annually. They have to report annually on their performance.
Yeah.
And so, and, and again, I think that.
But the charter's granted for four years.
Five years.
Five years under this, yes.
All the last four years.
I might interject to accelerate this discussion.
Yes.
This is one of the few ways in which charters will be analogous to public and non-public schools that are traditionally operated in, is they will be annually evaluated against conditions for learning, Every Student Succeeds Act. So there's an annual evaluation mechanism that folds into a feedback. If they're on track, they renew every five years. If they're not on track, there's a specific rule about technical assistance, support or conditions. So this is one of the few ways in which the charter school will be treated like any other school in the system of public education. So it's, it's not going to accelerate the, the amount of time they come before us, but they will be submitting annual reports.
Will their financial books be audited?
Great. I think we're a little bit over our time already. I want to respect, I think we had a little break period that we've cut into.
And I think a lot of your questions, I think, can be addressed later when we discuss the rules because I think those, those still apply. So thank you both. I know this will be continued conversation and we're happy to continue to address that. I don't know if you want to, we had a break scheduled to give some people some time to transition, if you still want to do that, because we were scheduled for the regular board meeting to begin at 10.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your discretion.
I have a minute break.
Yeah, let's go ahead. So why don't we say, David, we're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break to give people time to transition, if that gives you a chance to open the door for those that might be public to attend.
Okay. We're good to go.
Thank you.
Come back at 10.